Where do we stand relative to attendees? Maureen, Laido, Maureen?
I'm good, thank you, joining you from home. I have to leave at about 10:00 of 6:00. I have to get my daughter over to a practice, but I'm going to switch over to my phone at that time.
Okay, all right. We don't have Brad or Casey. Oh, Casey's there, okay. And Kristen said she wasn't going to be alone. Okay, so we only have Brad, who we're unaccountable with this moment. We will continue. So we want to, yep, we have a quorum so we can approve this. Let's do comments. Are there any attendees that would like to make a comment? Either in the room, either you?
Only Chris Caster, I think, informed all of you that as far as voting is concerned, it's a minor modification to an existing special exception use, and she can handle a whole other direction.
I'll just make a comment.
Okay, and then on the attendees, if any attendee that's there would like to make a comment, feel free to raise your hand. Oh, Kristen, you're there. Kristen, I should raise you up to a... I think you just did.
Hi, Bruce, this is Heather McNeil from Utesan Family, and Sue Consoli is also on as well to answer any questions.
Okay, great, thanks for having you. Thanks for joining us. Okay, so those are the comments. We'll go for approval of the minutes, starting with the July 26 minutes. Both sets of minutes have been distributed. Motion to approve the minutes from July 26.
Tell mode.
Go ahead.
Okay, motion, Maureen. Take a second from Susan.
I'll take a second.
Any changes, additions, deletions people want to make? If you're in our favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Take a motion for, hey, Brad, take a motion for August 23rd. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So, okay.
That's tiny. Is there a second?
I can do that.
Second for Judy. Any additions, deletions, changes? I see Casey's mouth moving, but I don't think she's talking to us. Okay, given that, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining, I was not at the meeting.
Okay. We don't have old business, we do have new business. And the good news is, on new business, we have received a significant number of applications. I believe it's 27 or so. And our... We need to go through a process, which I hope we can do a yeoman's amount tonight to be able to do a sorting of those applications. And hopefully, we have some consensus around both set of applications that we all think we can recommend, without further ado. And also, we may find some applications, which we have a consensus are not eligible. And so, what I thought, in order to get to that point, what I wanted to do was I sent out to everybody a sheet, which I call the ranking or rating sheet, and asked everybody to go through the process of ranking and rating the applications. And what I thought, for a matter of efficiency, one thing we could do is to just run down the, you know, top to bottom, and just take, you know, how many ones, how many twos, how many threes. And if we have eight ones or eight fours, then we know we've got consensus on those, and we don't have to have a whole lot more discussion. For those that we don't have consensus, we can then go back and discuss. And I'm happy to have both of our guest selection be involved in the voting. Or if you guys would prefer to please be a committee vote, then we will do the committee vote, and you can participate in the discussion when necessary.
A question, Bruce?
Yep.
If they are... What point are we going to turn down somebody for any given reason? And if they are turned out, are we going to notify them?
Yeah, well, definitely not. I think it's only fair. And I'm happy to take the responsibility on behalf of the committee to send a note, you know, based on whatever the discussion is tonight. Okay, so what I'm going to do is, now we've had that conversation, I'm going to bring up my ranking sheet.
Do you have an extra ranking sheet? I didn't actually see that, but I did go through them all and make my notes on all of these things.
Okay, you don't have to, if you don't, because all I'm going to do is simply say, Hope Partnership Affordable Housing, how many ones, people raising hands, so whenever the time comes. So you don't need to have a sheet in front of you.
Sorry, before you do that, were you having a discussion?
I wasn't planning to first. I was planning to just see where we were by going through, then go back to the ones where we don't have consensus to have a discussion. And you'll be able to see that on the sheet up here.
All right, well, no, there's Susan. All right, I'll do it anyway, no problem.
Are you questioning whether you're a certain number?
No, I feel as though there's a few of them here that...
Yeah, and so we'll throw those in the twos and threes, because we'll go back and discuss the twos and threes. So either there's a one, it's clearly ready to go, or it's clearly not.
Why don't we do it backwards then? Let's go to the fours. Wipe that off. Well, I don't want to say wipe it off, but, sorry. Go to the threes, and then we'll... It will dwindle down all of this.
Right, well, I think that's... If you stay with my process, I think what we'll do is we'll know what the fours are. We may all have different fours, so we'll just have to...
My question is, one is, yes, you are...
Ready to recommend.
Number two is?
It is a good idea, it needs more discussion.
Then three is?
Number three is, we're questioning it, but we're willing to kind of get more information about it. And number four is, we don't believe it's eligible, either by our, either by the federal guidelines or by our guidelines.
Okay.
Okay. Is that clear to everybody? All right, let's run down the process. So for affordable housing, the Hope Partnership, how many ones?
One.
See, I have a question on that right off the bat.
There you go.
They are housed on Iverton. I'm not sure why they're applying in this town when their home base is Iverton. Wouldn't they fall under Essex?
Okay, the way in which I read it is they're looking to do another project in Old Sable. And so, they're asking Old Sable, and I think Maxim, if I remember correctly, to provide funding to be able to support the executive director. So...
That was my question too.
There are a few like that, where the agencies are not located in town, and nor are the vendors, right? So, but they're applying to support some initiative or some neighborhood in the town.
So maybe there are two purposes of your spreadsheet, right?
Right. My question was though, they're supporting the executive director, not a project right now? So that was my question, I had a question about that, like...
Yeah, their home bases is Iverton.
Yeah, and it's to support the executive director versus an actual project that's happening in Old Sable, and they're not planning to do a project in Old Sable until 2024.
Right, so, I mean, people...
I didn't have that one as a one, even though I like...
One could choose to say then, it doesn't meet our guidelines, and so it's a four? Or one can say, we need more information, it's a three? You know, it all depends, so it...
Well, if they're based in Iverton, and they're hiring a person, that's an Essex situation, not Old Sable, in my eyes.
Okay, that's fine, Brad. You can...
It can't be an area. Hope goes through an area. It's not just responsibility of Iverton or Essex.
I understand that, but their home base is Essex. So why wouldn't they apply in Essex for that grant? Or how do we know they didn't?
Right, because this is for like organizations and people in Old Sable, I thought. Because...
Get one of those cheat sheets somehow.
We can...
Do we have an extra one folder?
Do you have an...
Do you have a blank one?
So Bruce, for the part of the process that we're doing right now, do you just want us to tell what number? Or if it was a two or a three, do you want us to also indicate what questions we had?
No, I just want to get the numbers, because I want to take the ones, you know, off the table, either go for or go again. And then we'll come back and have the discussion. So what I hear is, there may be some people who are fours, and some who are threes, and some who are twos on this. So let me just ask, are there any ones?
I had it as a one.
Okay, Liz has a one. Okay, so we've got two ones.
Maureen, I thought it was one.
Yeah.
Liz has none.
But...
Bruce gave us where she has.
Right now, Jennifer is Liz until Liz walks in. Okay. How many have it as a two? I have it as a two?
I do too.
Three, anybody up there?
I'm a three.
I was a three.
Okay, so we've got three twos and two... Two threes. So we're missing somebody.
Matt?
No, I'm not.
Now, is anybody... Oh, did you count name or... Let's go back. We have two ones, twos, one, two, three. Casey, what are you?
I had a two. I added a...
That's where I missed one. Okay. We'll get this going. Okay, Merrick and Legion. How many ones? One, two... You guys up there? I don't see any, so, two ones. How many twos?
I have it for a two, only for the consideration of reducing funding a bit.
Okay.
I'm looking at mine.
So it's one, two...
I was a two.
Four? Casey, I don't see what your hand is.
I had it as a three.
Okay.
But there were a lot that I kind of put as a two and a three, like in between two and...
Don't worry, we'll be going back and talking about it. Okay. So I'm still at seven.
I had a one, did you get that?
Yeah, you just have to put up your hand.
Sorry.
Connecticut Cancer Foundation, how many ones? No ones, how many twos? One, two...
I have a two for the same reason. Reducing funding.
Okay, so we have five twos. How many threes? I'm a three. Anybody else a three?
I mean, I was on the fence three and four.
You said there's no difference between three and four?
No, fence.
She's on the fence.
I said I was on the fence.
So they're a 503 Corporation? 501, 503?
501, three, yeah.
So...
Okay, Madam Development Commission, how many ones?
I'm gonna... Should I abstain in this one? Because I'm on the EDC.
I had a one.
I have a one.
So one, two up there, three, four, five. How many twos? I got one, two. Oops.
I wish you made one of those reduced funding.
Yeah.
Well, that's...
That's why I'm at a two, is because I'm thinking of a reduced funding.
Yeah. Okay, how many threes?
I'm a one.
You're a one. Okay, oh, and we have an extension, perfect. Fire Department. How many ones? One, one. How many twos?
Two.
Two, that's a lot of money.
Right, I would reduce the funding.
Good, two, we have three twos. How many threes? How about three? One, two, three, threes, and these, four. Okay, First Church Air Purifiers, how many ones?
Didn't we already approve that?
I had a one.
We said we're going to come back. So we've got up on the screen, I've got one, two, then...
The First Church?
Yeah, First Church. Maureen's a one, and then anybody else?
I was a one.
Okay, Casey?
I was a one.
Okay, oh, three, two, four, five, seven, eight.
I was a one.
We got a consensus. Himalaya Cafe, ones?
Question form, again, did they get PPP money?
They said they did.
They did, I didn't read that in there.
I think it's $11,000, I must be confusing it with Pure Blue.
Yeah. There was, I think both Himalaya and Pure Blue got either PPP money or something along those lines.
I think PPP did. I mean, Pure Blue got PPP money. It was not a lot of money, but it did $1,000 or something.
Okay.
So...
They did, $11,000 in the land.
Okay, so for the purpose of voting, how many ones? No ones?
She has a one, walking into a vote check out.
Oh, interesting. So...
That's what both of the labists like.
Yeah, okay, how many twos?
Two.
Question over there?
Discussion, discussion, yep, one, two, three, four, five.
And how many threes? And how many fours? I'm actually a four. Historical Walking Tour. How many ones?
Can I ask a question on that, or is that at the time? How'd you come up with $8,288 out?
It's in the app.
It's the app, it wasn't him.
Design costs, it's...
For how many years? I didn't see like...
$5,000.
$5,000 fires?
I was a...
Or Fiona?
Wait, let's remember.
Should we abstain if we're a member of the Old Sable Historical Society?
No.
Well, I said one.
Okay, so how many ones? One, two...
I say one because I'm a member. I said one because, you know, it's promoting outside, get people together. It's not that much.
Okay.
I had two.
So you're a two. Maureen?
Two.
Okay, so Maureen, we're staying with the ones. We have one on the screen, one...
I'll say one, very personal first. I mean, I don't know what they're getting. I mean, I don't know, is it a single page, or is it a multi?
No, big brochure.
That folds up. It's a little bit bigger than the first one.
About a dollar eighty-five a piece, or something like that?
Liz, you get to be a list.
It's less than that.
Jennifer's been doing great jobs.
Go burn us. There's design there, there's...
I wrote that...
So I didn't make use of being...
Any $188 as well? Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, so what we're doing is, we are just going straight down through and just getting a sense of where everyone's at. And we'll go back and discuss the ones that we seem to have some disagreement on. So we're all the way to...
I don't have the exact measurements of them.
You guys ready? We're at the Cure Recovery Spa, how many ones?
Wait, no, the last one, let's go back to the chamber.
Yeah, I took myself out of that.
I did not, you are abstaining.
I know.
So, you know, the... It's hard to vote on something you know what you're voting for. I mean, it's a brochure, but I didn't know that it was 14 by 17, multicolor. And, you know, and now I'm getting sold, I might be able to...
I don't know.
I already did.
When you were talking, you gave us up.
I was telepathic, joining you. Okay, Cure Recovery Spa, how many ones?
I'm a one.
There's a one.
I have a question now. I think there's validity in their request, but if we say one, does that mean we have to fund the whole thing? Because that was one of those things, I felt like it's a lot of money for one place.
So one is ready to recommend, board select. Two would be, I think it's a good idea, but we need to do something like cut and paste or something like that. So that would be the distinction. So I've got one, one. How many twos?
Two.
One, two, three. Anybody on the screen a two? Nope. How many threes? Got one. And how many fours?
Four.
Two, three. All right. Main Street Crosswalks, how many ones? One, two...
Two.
Hang on a second. And I'm, so I'm there, so four. How many twos? One, two, three, four, okay. Maple Court Watermane, how many ones?
What was that again?
This is the Watermane. Okay, how many twos? How many threes? One, two, three.
We have four here.
Four, five.
Liz, did you put up both yet?
Does that allow?
So that must mean we have two fours. Is that right? We're going to miss them. Maybe we've got eight threes.
Yeah, there's that eight threes, isn't there? There are eight, all right, there's eight four there.
Is anybody not a three? Here we are. Maritime Education Network, how many ones?
I'm a one on that one. I could argue to like move it to two for funding, but I would support this.
Okay, so that's two ones. How many twos?
Two.
Two, because I think it's too much for funding.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's...
Maureen, you might want to move to two.
I can move to two. Yeah, Bruce, you can move it to two.
Well, okay, but how many threes?
I'm a three.
One? Who's with you? Casey, what are you?
Two.
You're a two?
You could put me in two. You don't think it's a lot of money, but...
Well, that's the two correlation.
Of funding, but isn't two just more information in general?
Well, I thought we should change...
We...
Discussion.
No, yes, we weren't asking.
Discussion.
Mind Matters, how many ones?
Show me that, right, Mind Matters.
I was a one.
One, two, three. How many twos?
Two.
One, two, three. How many threes? Casey, I haven't seen your hand, or were you?
I was a two. Casey has a handful.
Yeah, I know. All right, Old Sable Corps. How many ones?
One.
One. Okay, go one, one. How many twos? One, two, three.
It should be a one. I mean, I think it's important, because it is helping people get jobs, which, you know, probably a lot of...
Is that a going business?
No, this would be starting.
It's a startup?
The people who are behind it are going business.
The application...
Oh, it's creating, okay.
Was it from? Sierra Colang is an existing business, is that what you're asking?
But there's not something...
I'm motivated, work.
Yeah, there's not something today called Old Sable Corps. This is a project that Sierra Colang, which is a going business, would be starting up.
Yeah, so, it's a startup business.
Yes, we're Sierra Colang Media Solutions Limited.
Old Sable.
Okay, so let's go back. How many ones? There was one, one, there's still one, one?
I do one, I switched to one.
Okay, now we've got two. Okay. I've got four twos. Okay, any threes?
I'll do a three.
Okay, so that's that. Old Sable Coastal Resilience Committee, how many ones?
Which one's that?
These. Right after Sable Works.
Yeah, but is that... Pogon Chalker Beach?
Yes, this is the Chalker Beach one.
Okay.
Okay, any ones? No ones, any twos? No twos, any threes?
I was a three.
Two threes. And how many fours? One, two, three, four.
I could be swayed, because I questioned that, would you believe me?
Yeah.
I was trying to read the final rule on water.
I know.
Okay.
No, I could do that twice in a school.
Public Health and Nursing Board, how many ones?
I'm a...
I'm like a one and a half.
Something off my Zoom.
How many two?
I'm a two. My only question is, are we setting up a program that we can't keep a commitment?
We'll come back to that discussion. So I've got two twos. Yours, three twos. Casey, what are you?
I was a one.
Okay. How many threes? Brad, I may have missed...
I'm a one.
All right, Pure Blue. How many ones? Pure Blue. How many twos? One, two...
I'll go two.
How many threes?
I was a three. I just felt like the application needed more information. So I'm in the category of willing to hear, but I think we need more.
Yeah, that was the same, three.
Three.
I'm a... The questions, but it's...
Same.
Paul's the same.
So that's a... I'm a two and a half. So Maureen, you were a three, anybody else a three?
I was a three.
This is Pure Blue, is that someone over by Pogon's desk?
That's the...
Yeah.
No, 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 Pure Blue is closer by... No, that's a connoisseur, I think that's not what you're thinking of. Pure Blue is...
Cross from Redford.
Across from Lake Teakettle.
Right, oh, yeah.
With a guy named... Oh, yeah, that's what I meant, I did mean that one.
Oh, sorry, okay.
That's the one where the police officer got shot?
No. That's a connoisseur.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
It was night said at the time.
So Casey, I think I missed you.
I was a three.
Daisy, it's the daisian, I think. Uh, Riverside Cemetery. Anyone, how many ones? No ones, how many twos?
Two.
One, two. How many threes?
Three.
Two threes. How many fours? One, two, four, three, four, five. Okay. Rotary Co., how many ones?
Uh, hold on. I have one, yeah, sorry.
Okay. How many twos? Casey, no. I don't wish you to hold your arm up the whole time. Um, any threes? Any fours? So I missed one.
Not yourself?
Yeah. Alright, Sandra Roberts, how many ones? I mean, I've got one, one. How many twos?
One, two.
Two, three twos? How many threes? One. How many fours? Two.
That was Brad and Casey. Could that one, that were three?
Casey, you're, like, your arms are your idols, it's helping you. Uh, Sabre Manor Beach Improvements. So this is the beach versus the code. How many ones? How many twos? How many threes?
We have a three and a half.
Yeah, exactly.
Looks like eight fours?
Four.
You didn't say that's the message.
Protocol.
Uh, Sabre Manor Co Restoration. Any ones?
That's Vincent Ever.
Pardon me?
That's the next one, Vincent Ever.
Yeah. Is it any twos? Let's go to fours. Any fours? One, two, three, four. Kristen, what were you?
Five.
I see, alright. Save Bucks Giveaway, how many ones? How many twos?
Two.
So there's one, two.
I, for now, I'm pretty much a one, but like maybe reduced funding. Did, um.
Yeah.
There would be a two.
Four in there, yep, okay. How many threes? One, two, three. How many? How many fours?
I know.
Oh, you're not voting, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Senior Pavilion. How many ones? One, two, three, four, five, and me is six. How many twos? One. Missing? Threes? Fours. And I know, I mean, this must have seven.
I could be convinced to be a one. I was just wondering if we should reduce the funding on that a little bit, but.
Okay, well, we can come back. Uh, Old Sabre Social Services, this is the amended one. How many ones?
I'm a one.
Two, three, four.
Kristen, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Oh, we can't hear you anyway, even though you're not on. So we're gonna work on the theory that you're, Kristen, you're a one though, right?
Are you two? We can't hear you.
Just tell her hold the fingers.
How many fingers?
What's?
A one?
She's in that one. Okay. How many twos?
Two.
I'm a two, just for discussion on funding him out.
Okay.
Do you have a question with this part? You said, I thought we were gonna have them come over and speak.
Uh, we may, now that we're at this point, we'll get, need for some more information.
So we shouldn't kind of table that one at this point?
Um, we will be coming back to it.
Okay.
You are Community Cares, how many ones?
Oh, Kristen's saying that somebody muted her. Jennifer, can you check, or whoever's in the, um, is she not on as a panelist? Did she lose her panelist? There you go. She's not.
Now she's muted.
No, she's not muted.
There now. There we go.
Kristen, you're just gonna have to do it with fingers.
Can you hear me?
You are.
Yeah.
Yes.
I muted myself, somebody muted me, okay.
Okay, you are Community Cares, how many ones?
Uh, Old Sabre Community Cares, I'm a one.
We lost Maureen.
Anybody in the room is a one, they're a two.
Yeah, she has turned off her video.
Okay, um.
Now she's muted. Maureen says she's muted now, or she was demoted to, uh, she's gonna come back as a panelist.
Yeah, I was a panelist.
It does show you part of it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I got a pop-up that said that I was being demoted.
Wasn't on our end.
And they turned off my video too, which maybe.
Sorry, I didn't know like that.
We were worried about your vote outside.
It actually says the host stopped my video.
And we're gonna go back to the top ones. We're at You Are Community Cares, how many ones?
I was a one.
I got a one. Casey is a one.
I'm a one.
How many, uh, Maureen, you're a one?
Yes.
How many twos? Two, three.
Yeah, it just felt like maybe there's overlap that we didn't say. Yeah, that's why I'm a three, actually.
Okay.
Since the website exists, I'm a little confused as to what they're.
Bruce is a.
Talking about. Yeah.
Okay, Valley Shore YMCA, how many ones?
That's a school.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Bookmore School.
Two, three, four, elsewhere. And I'm a five. Okay, how many twos? One, two, three, okay, so of course, there, just leave all of them. Okay, so now we've got, um, the eight applications and variety of video.
Can we just start by saying how many fours first, for all of them?
Sure, be happy to. How many fours for addressing the elephant?
I was a three, I'll be perfectly honest. It's mental health, guys.
How many threes?
I was a three.
Okay, we've got two threes, there we are. Alright, how many fours for the SBA loan? One, two.
You're talking, you're doing each of them, do it, they're all one for Friday?
Yeah, they've got.
I thought we were doing blank. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, for SBA loan, we've got the fours, we've got one, two. Me is a, three, how many threes? One, two, three, four, five. Alarm System, how many fours? One, two, three, four, five. New Fence, how many fours?
Four.
Alright, I'm gonna go to simply ask for the rest of variety of video, is there anybody who's not a four on anyone?
I had a three for the sign in the parking lot.
I would have, I would vote for that only if it was not me on, like it is now, it's so embarrassing.
Have to comply.
So there would be, uh, seven, one. And then, E.
I was a one for the computer printer.
But we're a one, okay. Now there's B. Garden Questions, B. Alright, so now we're at VFW, how many ones for VFW?
Uh, hold on. I think that, when you looked at the money that they wanted, it wasn't added perfectly. They asked for thirty-five grand and then they said that they needed like twelve and a half for making up their lost funds. So they really need like twelve and a half because they double counted what they were getting from us and what they wanted from us as one lump sum.
Right, okay.
So if we.
So is that sounds like a two to you, in order to be able to just get more information to get that?
Yeah, I guess so, unless we just said that it was.
I, yeah, they didn't seem to add up to me.
Yeah.
Not that I.
So that's just a two, nevermind.
Okay, so go back to ones, A. How many ones? Okay, how many twos? One, two, three, four, five. And me, I'm just.
I guess I'll be, I could be a two, it was like, it was just two, I'll do a two, two. I was between two and three.
Okay, three. So Casey, I think I may, missed you. What were you?
I'm a two.
Okay, so we're. Alright, well, we do have some consensus in some areas. So let's, um. Let's look at the ones where we are very close and just see. On the Economic Development Commission, we were six and one, there was one person who needed more information. Who was that and what more information do you want?
Well, I don't.
Which one was that? This is the Economic Development Commission. So this is the application for, um, marketing and. The four seasons.
I, I had my hand up for number two, so.
Okay.
It, my question, I mean, because we know that we don't have to fund the whole now, but to fund some of it. And, um, I just, I just wanted to know how much was the basic line uh, that the Economic Development Commission can do to start or, or get this going and because I was adding up everything that we're doing here. Um, and that was my question, because I know in the back of our minds that we know that we don't have to fund everything, we can fund part of it.
Right.
And somehow the Economic Development Commission, I mean, the whole town should be in on this. So I don't think it's disincumbent of our.
Well, but if I remember correctly, this was also like a multi-year request. It was like twenty-five thousand a year for four years, or what was it? What was it?
Yes, it's a hundred thousand dollars to be spread over four years.
Right.
But, I mean, I think.
Recording in progress.
Like the flexibility to be able to use more one year than you need to versus to have this batch one hundred thousand.
And the EDC.
A hundred thousand.
And I, Jennifer, the EDC is also putting in a certain amount from our own budget, right?
Yes.
I think that was the question.
Yeah.
Correct. So with that, now the EDC is also contributing, you're more comfortable with it being a one?
I think we're contributing forty thousand, if I remember. Ten per year.
Yes.
I'm switching over to my iPhone, can you, guys, just put me on as a panelist on my other login? I have to bring my daughter to practice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I mean, uh, I, I did forget that it was over a four-year period in, um, economic development, it's sound helps everybody, so.
Right.
I'm not a close twin, I just wanted a little more info.
Okay, so the historical walking tour with five ones and, uh, two twos. What additional? Brad, you were concerned about something there.
Why, just to know what we're voting for, it starts, how many brochures?
On the hat, on the hat in front of me.
So I, I, I think you're right, it was five thousand brochures were going to be printed up, and the last one was printed twenty years ago.
Yeah.
And.
And the costs includes photography, it includes research, includes graphic design and.
So it's a, it's a.
Can you take that and put that also on the website?
Sure.
So that if somebody was carrying a phone, like they're just looking at it on their phone?
Hundred percent. But the, the current one is on the website.
Put that on your website also?
The current one's on the website, yeah.
So five thousand are gonna last you how long?
A while.
A what?
The next twenty years.
No, well. It's not another twenty years. We, we last reprinted in eighteen at a thousand. It'll last us a good five, six years. It's a very popular brochure. It really surprises me sometimes how popular it is.
It is very popular, yeah. I still have the old one in my car because people ask me when I'm around the parks and stuff.
Okay, okay. Any other questions on that?
So you could, you have a question. You could make that as an app, so they could put it on their phone?
We, that was our original plan to come with an app, application. The costs, uh, were a little higher than we anticipated, so we decided to go with, right, yeah. Yeah. But it's not, you know, it's still on the back burner.
My only question was, it looked like it was like four thousand and change for the actual brochure, so the other three is for, did that go towards the intern?
Uh, some of it's for an intern at the Historical Society, some is for the photographer, and some is for the graphic designer to lay it out and, uh, you know, provide her services.
Okay, alright, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know.
Okay, um, Crosswalks, we're four and four on Crosswalks. People who wanted more information, do we want to?
I'm gonna make one comment, Bruce, please.
Just for select, sure.
It actually goes back to the EDC, uh, request, so, uh, according to the guidelines, um, we, we are going to be requesting all, and you're gonna listen, have to listen to dogs with squeaky toys here. You're gonna have, all the grantees are going to have to comply with Town Procurement Guidelines, so. So the EDC is, this is basically an advertising campaign and presumably, uh, we're going to be engaging a firm to do that. Uh, and the same thing with, uh, I believe, the Save Bucks, uh, request, uh, some of that money's for advertising. Um, so the advertising component, whatever it is, if it's between ten and twenty-five thousand, we're going to need multiple bids. If it's over twenty-five thousand, it'll be a public bid. Uh, so I just want, uh, people to know that, that the money is not automatically going to, oh, this local firm or firm that's had business for a long time or anything like that.
Good. Did you wanna speak to the Crosswalks at all?
Well, I mean, everything's in the application. It's probably, since we're contemplating adding a sixth crosswalk and moving the Sheffield Street, Sheffield Street Crosswalk, uh, in Wetherley direction, you know, it's between design and construction, i- it's a million-dollar project in all likelihood. Uh, by the time we do it, um, which is, it's probably, um, even if everything went perfectly, it's probably a twenty-four project, not even twenty-three. Uh, by the time you got permits and bids and everything like that, so, um, you know, just, it's, there's not a lot of money in here for infrastructure, uh, for town infra- Um, you know, just, it's, there's not a lot of money in here for infrastructure, uh, for town infrastructure, and you're talking about three million dollars. Um, if you were to look across the board at towns all over the state, towns and cities, probably significantly more than, whatever, eighteen percent, I mean, if you talk five hundred thousand of three hundred thousand, seventeen percent is going towards infrastructure. Um, or at least town, uh, direct town needs. So, um, you know, just pitching it, uh, there is, you know, if we were to look at all these applications, I know we're talking about, uh, the cost of certain applications and, uh, how we might wanna reduce funding for some of them. There is money available, um, and I think a lot of people are going to be quite happy, um, with what the work that this committee is recommending to the Board of Selectmen, but, um, yeah, I'd really like to see this request fully fulfilled. Um, it's not, it, it's a number that is not one hundred percent of the project, it's probably fifty percent. Uh, hopefully it's a little bit more than that, but I'm not positive, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You guys want to vote for a one?
Okay.
I would just say, like, I just- I have just a comment, just that, you know, like, we, I think we had asked this question last time about parking, and I think maybe Julie asked, are we gonna lose some parking spaces? And you said yes, I think we just have to be very careful about where we lose the parking spaces because, you know, EDC and Chambers, you know, I mean, you know, for the benefit of all the retailers, I mean, parking's tight down there as it is. So if we could just be careful about wha- how many spaces and where we lose those spaces, cause like, there's certain areas that are very congested.
Yes, uh, and you're correct about that, uh, but in order, and by the way, we're gonna make a request to the state that we would be allowed to put a crosswalk in across from Kate, that request may be denied. Uh, and if it is denied, nothing's gonna change. Um, if it is granted, then you're going to lose parking, you're right, in a very, in a spot that is somewhat critical to the rabbit hole and, um, that area. Uh, but I'll tell you, every time I go to the rabbit hole, um, and I don't wanna make it sound like I go there a lot, but I could wait there. Uh, there's always parking across the street, so it's, it's the same old thing, that the parking is, you know, when you live in suburbia, you wanna park in front of it, and if you have to walk twenty yards, you're like, damn, I have to walk twenty yards. You go to New York City, you're happy to get a parking spot within a half a mile. Um, it, it's, it's a funny thing, how that works, so. At the end of the day, I think there is plenty of parking on both sides of Main Street, um, for all the businesses, it's just that, you're right, people don't love to walk. Now, adding another crosswalk while you're losing some spots in front of Cartier and the Rabbit Hole, you also will be opening up, um, access to people to, uh, park, hey, I'm gonna park in the parking lot and I'm gonna cross at the Kate Crosswalk, and then they're on that side of the street, and that is very convenient parking. Uh, and it's also a place where we added two EV charging stations today.
Oh, wow.
The construction, like, they, the construction was started and completed today, uh, and they should be active by Friday. Anyway, so, yeah, you're, you're, you're not long to ask.
Record, I, uh, I, I agree with you as far as five hundred grand in the total ass being a low percentage, and I think there are a lot of projects that are really interesting in this town. But as someone who lives just off Main Street and has kids that are constantly riding bikes, there's, I mean, the drivers in this town are just terrible, and I have very little confidence that enhancing a crosswalk that people already ignore, I mean, I have stood out there with six children behind me, two-thirds of the way out into a street, and people are not stopping. People blow through that light, uh, you know, the, the, the red light that's in front of the firehouse, there's constant accident, no one's paying attention. And I, I would just love to see some data that shows that other towns that implemented this have seen a decrease in jaywalking or accidents or an increase in car stopping, because I think right now it's just, I agree with you that it's awful and it scares me, but I don't, I don't know, I look around and I see the people driving through this town and let, how horrible they are, and I just don't know that, like, a flashing light on the median's gonna move the needle at five hundred grand. I, I wonder if there's another way.
I think if you go to the middle town, when you look at their situation, they've done that, and, and I'll tell you, when you walk out onto that, it's almost like a pier. You walk out, you're up higher, so the cars can see you and you can see the cars. Where right now, the problem is out here, especially when you get vans, et cetera. You, you can't be seen, so like you, if you're standing there and you're, you're next to a van, they don't see the kids at all, they might see you. But I, I think it's very important to do that project to get those walks elevated.
I agree with you that something should be done because the whole area feels unsafe, I'd just like them to be, like, just prove it. Prove it that it makes it paper, that, that it actually works better, and, and I, and if I can see that, I could absolutely stand behind it, but, I don't know. You can't see-
Very quickly. Well, I think the next step to that is if it didn't work, then you'd probably have to go to flashing lights and push the button like that.
So very, very quick.
Start there.
Go ahead, girl.
Uh, and I know Casey could probably address some of this too, uh, with her background, but, uh, number one, it's a bit of traffic calming because you will now have, um, pieces of, um, concrete sidewalk coming out into the street. So cars will see that, and, uh, that makes cars slow down, number one. Number two, there will be rectangular flashing beacons in the crosswalk, and it will definitely, and I'm not saying it's gonna be foolproof, but it will increase safety, it will make it better, and probably significantly better. Um, and that's all I can really address on it, I don't wanna take up all your time in this meeting on this request, even though it is a significant request.
Okay, uh, good question.
I, I just wanted to make sure I understood, um, we're talking plus or minus five, oh, well, five hundred thousand, but the project itself is fifty percent, um, funded and fifty percent will come from other funds?
Yeah, so, uh, as Bruce and Brad both know, we put money into a capital non-recurring fund every year. We, we do a lot of projects with that, all over town, we've probably done over the last eleven years, um, probably one to one and a half million dollars with the projects that we just fund in this account every year. And we fun- funded a little bit extra into it this year. Uh, we always have a way to spend it because there's always a need in town for capital non-recurring projects, so. Uh, I would anticipate it would come from there, it could come from a surplus, if we, if we have a surplus at the end of the fiscal year. There's a couple different avenues from which it could come, but you can't necessarily count on any one of those being there necessarily at the time that we need the funding, but I would hope that it is because we've been saving for that time.
Okay, thank you, Carl, um, that was just some of my questions that I had, and I can change that to a one, uh, you want that on your form? Only because I have been in Westbrook and they now have new crosswalks with the big signs, and I have noticed it's more visual for a rider when you have the big FedEx and UPS truck and Amazon flying in front of you, and you can't see anything. Those signs make a big difference and as a driver.
Change rate of oil.
Right, so we're gonna throw this in as a one, but with the need for more data for the answer.
Yeah, I mean, if I, if I'm overruled, then that's totally fine, I just-
It's worth getting.
I have very little data in the drivers in this town.
And, and we have, we have some middle town information, there's a, somebody on the screen.
I, I was just gonna say, I don't know if this is helpful or not, and I don't have like exact data or anything in front of me, but I, I was a planner for a long time until I went to stay home with the kids, so, um, and I can tell you that it's a pretty widely recognized traffic calming measure. Basically, the, the data is that the narrower the travel lane is, the slower the cars will go. And the, the travel lanes there are really, really wide, like, they're incredibly wide for a, for like a Main Street, um, and they both have two lanes. So the idea is that the narrow, you're, the narrower you make the field of vision, the slower people will go. And it's not, yeah, it's not foolproof, it's not perfect, but it's probably the best thing that can be done there. Short of lights, which would create a whole other mess of problems and be a lot more expensive, so. Um, I, and I, I could probably find data somewhere, I just don't have that kind of data right now. But it's just in the planning field and in the traffic engineering field, it's like a very widely, the only other thing that people can do is bumps, and that's also something, A, the state would never let you do, and B, that would never actually work there.
Yeah, I had a little on-
So can you go back to that and make the votes?
I, I put it in as a one.
No, I'm a-
So the votes now, the votes were to help us get to making, having a discussion, so now it's, it's in as a one.
The whole thing is, you got nine votes, I'm, I'm misunderstanding.
This is, this is the, this is the most important column now, the ones that show up as ones in this column are, are the ones we're ready to recommend.
Okay, I'm with you.
That's why I'm trying to do this on a computer. Um, Heather, your hand is up, are you, do you wanna speak to this issue? And do we need to unmute her in order?
First, did you hit save?
I have to unmute. Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Um, I had put it up, uh, by mistake, but I did wanna just mention, Your Community Cares, um, they actually reached out to us at the office several months ago. They don't actually do the work, they, they contract with someone like us, um, to find the volunteers and do everything that they, they're proposing. So I'm not exactly sure what their funding request would be utilized for.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back to that when we get to U R Community Cares, which may not be tonight, but we'll, we'll do that. Thank you. Um, all right, so the next one, we're, the Public Health Nursing Board, we've had five ones and three twos. How many, uh, the people who are the twos? What additional information do people want, is this something we can discuss in the next round?
It's Maureen, and I was a two on that one, and my concern was just, are we setting ourselves up for funding something that somebody else has to figure out later? And forgive me, I'm in the car and I don't have my other notes in front of me, that was why I gave it.
Right. And Susan, you're a two.
I, I were, I was, I am, sort of, I was a one and a half, I'm gonna tell. Um, not because I don't think it's, it's needed, because I do think it's needed, um, but I wanted to make sure, um, uh, like Maureen said, that we weren't gonna have it suddenly drop off, and then what do we do? We know that, we know it's needed, and-
And if I remember correctly, this was ten, ten hours a month.
Yeah, the app does say that they will continue to secure funding going forward, so, they must have other grants that they use or something.
Yeah, see, I read it as they would, they would try to keep the funding coming forward, and I, that was just a question mark in my mind, right?
So this was earlier?
This is for an eight, a psychiatric APRN, ten hours a month, to be able to, um, provide service to seniors in the community.
So that, would that be a, uh, step two from youth enrollment?
Yes, cause she, the people at Youth and Family weren't APRNs, and in order to get someone into a hospital, uh, you needed an APRN to speak to the hospital, so there's, it sounded like there are a lot of steps you had to go through to be able to get someone from point A to point B.
Okay. I don't know where I was on that, but I'll say one.
Mm-hmm, okay, so it sounds like we're ready to recommend, but Carl?
Yeah, um, so we've been very clear to everybody that this is not continuing funding forever, so they put in the application knowing that, uh, that this is not funding that will continue forever, at least from the ARPA funding. And number two, uh, if this is a COVID problem, perhaps through this funding, they can, um, maybe rectify some of the problems and get people into treatment whereby they will not need continuing service. So maybe it's a demand that decreases with the funding, so, just a thought.
Yep, okay. Are we losing that screen, is it getting darker or is it just me?
I thought it was-
It's getting darker.
It is getting.
No, no, it's not just-
I thought maybe I was going the wrong- It's weird.
It, it, the sun is going down in the house.
All right, we'll keep marching, uh, Rotary Club, we have six ones and two twos, is there, either of the twos, what, what questions needed to be answered?
Well, I was a two, but I, I, I just, I, I, I just wasn't sure, um, with the application as to, um, whether this was money lost through COVID and it will be remitting, you know, that problem will be solved, and I just had a question on how, how much or all of it?
Yeah, I read as a, as net losses from their events that were canceled.
That's what I heard as well.
All right, and that was the only-
By all life, if they had a surplus, they'd use it more as a anyway.
Right, yeah.
It's going on.
Right, it's, the, and the important part of the thing about that was, it was money that they weren't asking for themselves, it was money that they were then gonna put back into the committee.
Okay.
My notes were, do they need more?
No, I, I just, I, I wasn't quite sure, and I, I,
That's a slam dunk.
After so many hours of reading all of this, I was beginning to get a little spurry, right? You can change me to a one on that.
Okay, uh, so the next one we're close is Senior Pavilion.
Get out.
Okay. Uh, Old Saybrook Social Services, we have two twos. And Rajan, what?
Two, and I, I still question the overlap between Youth and Family and them, uh, and, and the services they're providing, uh, that was stalled out in their application, I, uh, I, I still feel as though that we need to talk to those two agencies.
Okay, so we will, let's invite them in for the next meeting, which is on the-
I, I don't mind.
Twenty-fifth?
Aren't we talking about the Pavilion?
Were we talking about the Pavilion?
No, the Pavilions, we, we had a-
Oh, oh, okay.
The one, two, said she changed to a one, so we were ready, we just went-
I'm sorry, I got confused.
All right, um, okay, so there was another two, let me just, before I, I wanna make sure it's not.
It might have been me.
Okay.
Because I wasn't sure on the review, and I see Sue is up there and Heather's up there, on, um, if there was a change in, in the monies that were needed. And my other question was, because in the back of our minds, we know that we can give all or, or partial, um, what priority would be given, would they give to some of these projects that they really, really need up front?
Okay, let me turn this around. Heather, if you're still there or listening, can you, um, can we unmute you and just ask you whether you would be available to come in at the next meeting, you and Sue perhaps, and kind of answer these questions and we can get this all resolved?
We would be happy to.
Okay.
This is coming in, can I just?
Go ahead.
I, I have a question too, um, cause I kinda wavered between a one and a two. Um, I just was trying, I'm not sure that I completely understand where the difference is between what's related to COVID losses and what's going towards COVID needs. Um, like what's actually funding COVID needs or issues related to COVID problems versus what are sort of regular operating costs and things, you know, sort of normally accrued expenses? I, I mean, I know, I know the application was updated, but I'm just, I just don't totally grasp that still.
Okay.
It was also, if I could add my two cents, the print for my aging eyes was tiny, and so I would love to be able to like read the detail. So that would be my vote, is can we get some more, some more information?
Okay, all right, we'll keep moving, so we've then got, uh-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Your next meeting is the twenty-seventh, and that's still Rashishana, and I couldn't make it to defend the pavilion.
You won't need to, because we just, but it's a very good point that it's Rashishana, and we will make a, uh, we'll make a move because we should not be having a meeting on Rashishana. Uh, Valley Shore YMCA, we had five ones and three twos. Were the folks who are twos, more questions can we answer?
Yeah, I started, I think I was a two because I couldn't get through that application.
Okay.
It just got to the bottom of my pile.
No, I understand. It, I, I will, um, I will advocate only in that it was- No, I understand. It, I, I will, um, I will advocate only in that it was basically related to COVID losses. They're running the before school and after school program, and they need the additional money in order to bring on staff uh, to be able to support more families running those programs.
Yeah. Because they revenue from the last two years now.
Okay. So it sounds like we're ready to recommend them.
Yeah.
They can change from all of them.
Okay. So, uh, all right. And then I'm going to. Where's you?
And then, um, back to the YMCA. I thought the vote there was one, five, three, if I've seen that right.
I think so. There's a, the first column?
Yeah, right. This, this is the column. I'm covering, I'm covering up the one. It was five ones and three twos. And so, and by the number of the people who are twos are now ready to support one.
Yeah. So these are, so it was five ones and three twos. And then when we're doing this column, it's anything that's a one or a four. So we know if it's approved or not approved. And then we'll sort through the rest.
Right.
Just kind of summarize.
Okay. So what we've got then is a bunch of ones that we're ready to recommend, a number that are, we're not ready to pursue. And then we have the rest to discuss. We're inviting, um, Old Sablek Social Services in is, um, we're at six thirteen by my clock. It would be helpful, I think, if we just ran through a few of these to say what more we wanted in the way of information so we could gather it. And let's just march until, can people stay with us until six thirty and then we'll, we'll kind of exist. Okay. So.
I cannot. I'm gonna sign off. It's Maureen. But I trust my uh, colleagues to do good work. And, and I will talk to you guys in a couple of weeks.
We'll let you know what happens. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. Bye.
Yeah, bye bye. So for affordable housing, uh, the Hope Partnership.
Excuse me, Bruce, I have to jump too. I have to be, I have to do something for my mother at six, be there at six thirty. So she's having surgery, surgery tomorrow. So I have to go to get over to her house.
Good, good luck today.
Thank you.
Brad, you had a concern about their location?
No, I just feel as though their business is essential. And if they need funds, why don't they apply in us?
Okay. We don't know that they didn't, but you're.
Yeah, I, I always led to believe from the answer to their question that they were applying to other ones because it said they were also applying at Old Sablek. And I think that was just a mistake.
Those were my notes too.
Right, yeah, right.
Um. Not that there's not a need for it, but.
Exactly. Uh, I was kind of curious.
That was sort of my question with the Cancer Society too. Like, I love the renovation, that the building looks great. It's wonderful to have it here, but like when it all nets out, it has to go to our.
Well, right, right.
So that would be the question.
Before we, yeah, before we went there. So that's right. So that was a question about, you know, whose benefit is happening? Okay, um. American Legion, we're kind of a little, little bit on that. The but it sounded to me that maybe the concern was the, the level of the request. Is that, is that right? Or was there other concerns?
The method, yeah, probably.
Well, American Legion, that was, that was the DFW, yeah.
I was wondering if American Legion could have just net numbers and not just gross numbers.
Were they done with that? Were they, that were in there? Was that the DFW that we got into that whole rabbit hole?
American Legion was here.
They entered here a couple of times. But I think, didn't they supply um, their IRIS forms so you can actually see what they get in and go out so that you could see each year before and after how, what drastic drop it was?
Right. But, but with that drastic drop, it wasn't eighty eight thousand. It was more like thirty seven thousand or something like that.
That's what we talked about.
All right. And so the question is, so.
So they put in for what, eighty seven thousand?
Eighty eight.
Eighty eight thousand. So let's give them sixty five.
Why don't we bring this back to a, we'll bring it back for a discussion and recommendation at the next meeting. How's that?
That is fine.
Um, well, we've contacted, well, you, can we contact them and say, you know, we have a question about this?
Oh, absolutely.
And then there would be an answer when we pick up that discussion because I need to have this drag on and on and on.
I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, proportionally, the money that they're asking for at eighty eight thousand, and then we've got with the Rotary Club, which I feel like that's, I see them more in the community, is asking for twenty three. And the DFW, what they're really asking for is closer to twelve. So eighty eight seems out of whack.
Yep, yep. Well, and also, and also what they were asking for wasn't directly to then be responsive to COVID needs. Right. So that, that's me is what I, I.
Yeah. See, cuz I see it as a loss because they weren't able to get that money in with, and many of their projects that they do in fundraising. So if we give someone else money for a loss because, and the Lions Club, you know, the Rotary Club as examples, then they're no different. And if you don't see people walking down the aisle with veterans caps on, you don't know what work they do behind the scenes that they spent this money on. I just feel if, you know, I'm trying to balance it out. We make a decision based on these criteria for one, you know, to carry it over for another.
Well, this was, this was a question and sort of an issue I had on a lot of these, both with the not, some of the nonprofits and some of the businesses, which is that I think a lot of them demonstrated some sort of revenue loss, but the, the, but they didn't demonstrate that the money was related to any COVID prop, like COVID created problem, or that the money was going to resolve a COVID created issue other than the issue of their direct revenue loss. And so I, with all of the ones like that, I kind of struggled with should we give them, like, should we give them funding and how much funding should we give them? Because I think every single, not, maybe not every single, but the vast majority of both nonprofits and private businesses in town could demonstrate a revenue loss that occurred during COVID as a result of COVID. And obviously, you know, we only have the applications in front of us that we have, but I just, I, I think we as a committee had decided we weren't going to kind of just hand out money to every, you know, kind of nickel and dimes to every like group that came in and demonstrated a revenue loss that we were really gonna try to look at positive impacts and um, addressing issues related to COVID. So I kind of, that, that was, that kind of was an issue I, or a question I had about a lot of these, like what our approach is going to be in those situations as a committee.
Yeah. And I think, you know, one of the reasons why I sent out, what I sent out yesterday about the two tests, two tests relative to this. One is COVID loss and then is the response, responsive to what the loss was. And I think the American Legion falls into that category where yes, you probably identify loss, but what they've asked for is significantly more than what the loss was. And so we just need to, um, you know, so I.
Then, is that the one I want? Is the new stove or something?
Well, what they spend their money on, regardless of how they get it, whether it was during the year of COVID and they could earn that money, to me, that's not my, my concern looking at this. My concern is, and I go back to what you said, which is sort of a paraphrase of your last email, where you said, you know, was there harm due from COVID? And does this request mitigate that harm that was made by COVID? And that was the same criteria that, you know, I, I applied to some of the other nonprofits. So again, my side, I'm just trying to make sure that we, we are consistent with our looking at this. And I'm also fair regardless of, you know, if you're shocked by the eighty eight thousand as opposed to twenty three thousand for another nonprofit. It's, did they demonstrate that that was a need loss? And does this help them? Because how they spend it in the future, I mean, if the building is an asset, if they decide to, to fix that asset so that they can continue to get revenue in, that's a good thing. You know, but it's not a question that I need to ask them, I think, as a, as an ARPA member, I understand.
Okay.
I'm wondering if um, maybe in those situations where the only COVID relation, like the only the COVID harm is that there was some sort of loss, but they're not addressing necessarily directly one of the like pillars that we talked about. If we could cap the, like, across the boards, they were not gonna give them more than in those situations, we're not gonna give more than X dollars or something like that to kind of keep it equitable. Cuz I, I mean, maybe nobody else agrees with me and that's, that's fine. But I'm just not really comfortable. Like I said, I think everybody lost money during COVID, or the vast majority of businesses and nonprofits lost money during COVID. And I'm just not comfortable just giving them, giving them a large sum of money just for that, just because of that. I, I just think it's kind of not fair. And I think it doesn't really achieve any of the larger goals that we had talked about in the beginning.
Does it achieve what ARPA was created for?
Right.
I mean, I, I'm just balancing. Like, I, I'm not trying to be argumentative or anything.
I, I don't believe we're gonna answer this question.
I think you're right, Bruce. You're on a timetable, but I, I.
And I think that the, but I, I understand what the question is. And I think we ought to come back and that, the answer to that question is actually going to then direct how we handle a number of the ones who are, that are, that are here. So that's helpful.
So they answered that, uh, no critical, please.
Well, no urgent need, I think.
Yeah, no, so no critical, agreed.
Okay. But the question was urgent. I was.
So the whole application wasn't written all out? Well, yeah.
Let's, let's come back. I, we, we know we have questions. Let's come back. To the Connecticut Cancer Foundation. I, I'll put my concern on the table. Even though they are Old Sablek based, in my mind, the question is, would the funding that they're asking for be happening in Old Sablek? I mean, they're, what they're talking about, they're a statewide organization that has identified a loss of X, you know, whether it's two hundred and fifty or whatever. But if they're a statewide organization and not, not at Old Sablek, you know, not one of our local nonprofits.
Well, they are, they, they are, um, the, um, executive director lives in there.
Yeah, but the constituents are across the state.
That's true.
Beneficial.
I think that we should consider a, a percentage.
Yeah, something. Okay. So, so we'll come back, um, um, the next meeting with a kind of a recommendation of something.
Percentage.
Yeah. My concern with that application is it went out all the way to the losses projected in twenty twenty four.
Right, yeah.
Let's hope we don't have all that.
And the, and the other thing is, I mean, they have a lot of clients um, in this area. And, you know, perhaps to what Brad is saying, if we get a percentage in it, and it equals a, a balance of the clients that they're using right within a thirty mile radius, say, of this office.
I think that's a great idea. Cuz that way the percentage is tied to some sort of rationale. Yeah, yeah, and percentage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Fire department. The, but I can tell you that the fire department came into the board of finance, um, asked for radios for the, um, for the board of finance. Um, other activities are taking place. And I, my suggestion is that we put this on hold while there is continued discussion within town.
Well, Carl, I mentioned at the last meeting that they're gonna have a roundtable discussion
right.
about it because there's uh, some uh, variance in.
With the services, the fire, the police.
So I think I should just.
And actually, they even have a FEMA grant application in on this, for this funding. And they just haven't heard yet. And there's about three months left in the application period.
Okay.
Good to know.
Um. Himalaya Cafe, um, we had fives that were, five that were twos. So sounds to me like there's a question there about whether or not the amount was, was the right amount. Um, I'll tell you, I was the four. And the reason why I was four was I was trying to be consistent about the, um, you know, this is an organization that does, did have, um, uh, impact in COVID. However, they did receive various different tranches of, of federal funds. And to me, there is no guarantee that if this money was available, then the org, that they, they were gonna stay in business. And so it's like we, we could either get kind of deeper into their business to understand whether or not this is really a going concern, or we can make a decision as to whether we really want to be helping out, you know, just providing funding to a business in town.
My question was, why didn't they get P P P for a margin of value?
Well, we, I don't know whether they didn't get one.
It's kind of a question then.
When you see the amount of money that these restaurants got, it's kind of, they're gonna.
Because it's, it's based on the number of employees that you have on the payroll. And so depending if they have, you know, a restaurant that has a lot of family that might not be on the payroll, then all they can apply for with PPP is who's on the books and what the, the backup for that is.
Right. But it's, then, then it goes to, it's on the books.
Yeah.
I don't wanna say the next slide.
It, my, my, my question was, um, going back to my years of being in retail, but uh, getting this money with this, I didn't feel really solid on the footing that they would be able to hire employees to continue this business in a positive rate. I mean, I'm, I'm a family, I was a family run business, so I'm used to having family members come in with a, if a business store needed extra help. And no, it wasn't on the books because it was your family. And we don't need to feed you for dinner tonight. You come in here and sweep the floor, you know what I mean? And I, I know that some of these family members are the same way. I need you to help me in the business so that we can continue. My question was just, I, I didn't feel really solid on the fact that if they get some money, is it really going to help them to put them on a solid ground?
Right.
Is that something that we need to ask for information on? Or did we just want to table this?
Right. Well, that's, I, I think we need to, we need to have a policy on that as we look at because there's a bunch of businesses that fall into that category. And so we gotta, like, as you were saying before, handle everybody the same way. Let me suggest it being six twenty nine. I really appreciate everybody's hard work on this. Why don't we call it here? Um, we, we've, we've got a good, good job. Um, we'll work over the next couple of weeks on being able to kind of maybe group the ones that are remaining for the discussion. Uh, we have uh, youth and family services and social services coming into the next meeting to have that discussion. And maybe we can get through the rest of them after that, after that comes.
If, if I have some questions on these, would it be all right if we just, if I just send them to you and you're going around?
Sure.
Maybe we can have some underlying table discussion before our next one. Because I think some of our questions are the same.
Yeah, I, I.
I agree with that.
The only thing, Bruce is not already. Do we have a question like the Zeebo while she's here?
We don't have a question.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Heather.
Like a balance sheet of like money that's been spent. And then maybe we can tally what we've approved, what's been spent, what we've approved. And then of the remaining things up for discussion, how much money we have to.
That's a good point to, um, dole out.
And can I, did the question, right? The occasion they did that big presentation that you never.
We funded from the, the town service. Um, so I can't get to that. Um, we have. And I think we spent two sixty five on this amount of ones that we have right now.
About a million one?
About a million between what was, what's already out the door and what is in our number one category.
And we have three, three.
And we had two point nine total.
Yeah, about three million total.
That's still a lot left. And still a lot left.
Yeah.
So if you wanna send questions around to each other and share them.
Well, I just.
But we can't have a discussion about it.
Right, right, right. We can't have a meeting, but if we have questions, we can say, hey.
Yeah, then everybody can read through.
Would it be better to send them to her and her distributor?
I think it's a good idea, her being gentleman.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we can have a tab in the um. In the drop off. So there's like a Q and A. So you. We don't have fourteen emails bouncing around. It's all just like a wiki in one spot.
Yeah. All right, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion. All favor I. Thank you all very much.